All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. It is 1:04 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, and Commissioners Carolina Mejia, Gary Edwards, and Emily Claus, two to my left, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Rodden Campbell. We've got two hours to have a couple of sessions with different elected offices. First up is District Court. We have Judge Buckley and Frankie from our District Court team, and I guess it's time you guys.
Okay, well, I'll start off by talking about a subject that we haven't talked about at all, which is the new courthouse. I had indicated, I can't remember whether I said it in this group or in meeting with Leonard, but I've reached out to the Thurston County Bar Association, let them know that these conversations are starting up again, and they were really the one active group from the last time that was supporting this, the effort of the county. And I've gotten positive feedback that they believe they could reformat once the commission decides which approach it's going to take. So I said I'd get back to them as soon as I have a word, and they're ready to start trying to bring resources in.
Can I, I would love to chat with you because I just had a conversation with someone from the AG's Union, and they said that they would also be happy to support in this endeavor. So they've been keeping a track of this. Of course, many of their AGs are using our court campuses, and so they were, I'm glad, because it was on my, had to reach out to the Bar Association, so I'm glad that you have already done that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. And that shouldn't be the end of it, you know, we should, one of the things we didn't do well last time was get more groups like this, but that's, you know, it's an obvious place to start, so I think that'll be a good one. But I don't want to be premature on it, so wait till we get the heads up from the board. Okay, that was leadoff. So just what were the things that we're still thinking about at District Court? You know, we maintain, you know, we just want to keep the conversation going about the organizational view of the courts and the executive branch and the legislative branch, and just remind folks that we're still, that's still really important to us. And at some point, we'd love to see a, you know, reconfiguration of the county org chart just as a symbol of understanding that, you know, this is all out there. But I will say that I know Frankie and Leonard have been talking a lot about, you know, issues that would fall under that, personnel issues and things. And the way that, you know, I'm hearing that they're working is a really good sign that there's this understanding that we need to be able to sort of set, you know, what's important to us as far as job specs and those sorts of things. And so I'm really pleased with that approach from the county, so we really appreciate that.
I just wanted to also share my appreciation for Leonard, too. We've had a lot of great conversations when we're talking about classifications and addressing the needs of personnel and how we're kind of organizationally structured, just because we haven't looked at it in over 20 years. So the courts have changed quite a bit, and having that opportunity to sit down, talk, kind of learn from each other as far as what the needs are and building that understanding, it's been a really great approach, so I appreciate the partnership. It's been fabulous.
So, yeah.
Sorry, I was just, I was sure it was vanished.
Yeah, to take a call, I think.
Okay, I just didn't see it. I just looked up and he's calling.
So, you know, I'll just keep bringing this up just as an issue that we had a good conversation about last time, but I just think, just recognizing that the courts are a separate branch of government is just going to be important, and we'll figure out, you know, that's going to cause some bumps here and there, but I really appreciate how the county's, you know, open to discussing it and trying to figure out how to reflect that. Second thing is, I think one of the things, just from a big picture view, is reminding the board, because we get reminded about it all the time, that decisions made with other agencies, for example, law enforcement, other prosecutor's office, have significant, they aren't done in a vacuum. So if you add road deputies, you're going to add cases. If you add cases, you add cases to public defense and to the courts. Public defense will get about, you know, probably 85% of the cases that get filed, but we get 100% of the cases that get filed, whether they're private counsel or public defense. We're going to see all of those. And so, you know, when something happens like the public safety bond and we start getting increased personnel, we're starting to see, see the pressure on us and without, you know, any resource adjustment. So just remind folks that when you're talking, you know, to the other agencies and you're thinking about their needs, just understand that, you know, helping somebody else out may burden us as well. So we need to be integrated in those conversations and thought about it, at the very least, the impact it may have on us from both a case filing standpoint and then ongoing cases that we're keeping going. So I think it's really important to remember that. Frankie, did you have anything you wanted to add there?
I think that pretty much sums it up. I think it's just an ongoing conversation that we have, and when we have more time to get into more specifics, I know last time that we met, I started throwing out some data and stats and everything. We start looking at those numbers, and when those numbers are so new, because, I mean, we haven't engaged this much historically, when those numbers are so new, they're very daunting, they're very overwhelming. So to kind of keep those conversations going and acknowledgement when those changes happen outside of the court but within the judicial or within the justice system, we end up seeing those impacts, what those impacts look like, are those conversations that we can have ongoing that we just kind of want to bring awareness to.
I don't know what the best, like, data points are, but if you guys figure them out, if you could help us, you know, track them, because it feels like to me, in the last year, two, three years, there've been so many moving pieces, from Blake stuff to, you know, COVID, you know, jails closed down, the jails reopening, the staffing's changing, it's sorting out, you know, where, and again, I absolutely understand there's going to be an impact, but sort of gauging the magnitude of that, whatever the best way to do that is, you know, I'd rely on you guys to think that through and help us, help us estimate it so we can say, okay, this is really like judicial impact from, you know, from the increased deputies, for example, through the public safety tax or whatever. Such a complex system with so many different things moving.
Well, I can come in here and say that we increased our dockets by 20%, or proceedings for DUIs and DVs have increased by 40%, but it's, what does that mean? What does that look like from another perspective, other than me sitting in front of the computer putting all the data together? And I just sent an email to Leonard about a half an hour ago, so I think we might have an opportunity to kind of share that information in a different forum that might be able to get that information to you in another way so that everybody has a chance to review it, and then we can come in and start asking questions and getting involved in those discussions instead of me coming in and scaring everybody with a bunch of numbers that don't make sense.
But I think our goal for today was just to remind folks that there is an impact. We can't just be blind about what happens downstream, and for legal filings, we're the end of the street. It all comes in one place, it's there, so we need to be aware of that. And Commissioner Menter, you mentioned COVID. I'll say that I had COVID last week upon return from a conference, deadly conferences. And given the way we've set ourselves up these days, I was able to do every single calendar that I had last week remotely. So I didn't come into court, didn't, you know, infect anybody. And by the way, I tested negative yesterday, so I'm not putting anybody here at risk. But I just want to let you know that, you know, by doing remote hearings, by doing our live streaming, we've allowed us this flexibility that, you know, a judge can be sick with this disease that's highly contagious and yet made everyone, I heard every case I was supposed to hear last week. And I think it's a big, big advantage for us that we have that ability to do it. You know, it comes under the rubric of no more snow days, but it applies, you know, across the board in a lot of different ways. So I think it's important that you all know that we have that capability and we are exercising it, and, you know, it'll continue to show its worth in a bunch of other ways as we go forward. And then, you know, one other thing that's not on my list of things to talk about, but I don't want to forget to mention it, is the administrative office of the courts has come out with a new, I can't remember what they called, it's sort of a Data for Justice Dashboard. And it, it shows in its first iteration criminal filings and spreads them across groups by race in the county, and it's premature, so I don't want to even really get into their data. But it's, it's, the genesis of this is work that they've been doing with us since 2018, where we, when we initially did our, well, we informally referred to as our Secret Santa program, but I call it the Procedural Justice Initiative, where we had observers come in and watch us over three days where we didn't know they were there. Frankie's predecessor arranged for folks to come in who we knew who they were, and they just watched the judges work, watched staff work, and then prepared a report and said, here's what we're seeing by, how you treat people by age, gender, you know, did we notice any differences, that sort of thing. And there was no reason for us to do this, there was no complaint or anything, other than we had been to a conference and heard about, you know, discrepancies of treatment among different racial groups and gender and age groups, and thought maybe we should just try to find out for ourselves. And so we did that, and then we got a researcher from Senate for Court Research, Administrative Office of Courts, and said, let's continue this as an ongoing process. Let's continue to do data analysis to track this and see where we are in this. And so Dr. Peterson, Andrew Peterson, at ALC, has been working with Frankie, and he comes in and reports to us on at least an annual basis, sometimes semi-annual basis, about what his numbers are showing, and trying to create a template that could be used in all the counties in the state, so every court in the state could potentially get this information. And now they've come out with a broad sort of dashboard approach, which could be used not only just for courts, but obviously for law enforcement, for prosecutors, and it's going to be a really fascinating work. So I wanted to just tip you off that it's out there, it is born of some work they have been doing for us, and the work that they're doing for us is at a much more granular level, not just this one big broad dashboard now, but...
Is it the racial and ethnic disparity dashboard?
It's probably that, that's probably it. So anyway, it's a, I think it's going to be a really good tool. I think you all should know about it. It's a good way to sort of get a sense of what's going on. It's too early, I think, to make any conclusions from their initial cut on the data, but it's a really positive step that we're going to actually be looking into these issues without anybody forcing us to, because there's some, you know, something that's hit the, you know, the attention of folks either through the press or some other way, and it's important that we know. You know, my comment when we were talking about initially opening ourselves up to this evaluation and having conversation among the judges was, okay, we could say, no, it's too scary to do it, we don't want to find out what other people think about us, or we could say, what's even scarier is not knowing what other people think about us. How about if we know? How about if we just have people find us, find out and tell us what they think, and then go from there, and maybe we make adjustments, maybe we don't, but we could react that way. So anyway, I think it's a really neat project that they have going on, and I think the board as a whole will want to pay attention to it, because I see implications for not just the courts, but for courts of county. Any questions on that?
I don't have questions on it, I just want to say thank you for continuing that work and for being proactive about it. I remember when we first talked about the, what you called the Secret Santa, but the Observer, you know, initiative or whatever, you know, whatever you want to call it, but I think that's really cool that you did that, and I love hearing about it every time I hear about it. So thank you for the work you do. I don't have a question about the dashboard, but I do have another question, but I want to let anyone ask about the dashboard if they have questions.
I didn't, I was just, you know, we've got, I just would like to plug that, whatever we're looking at and seeing and, you know, plugging that into the Law and Justice Council, you know, that's a great, seemed like a great place to discuss what we're seeing there and what might be able to be done about it, not just across county, but across the, I mean, that's the kind of thing that the Law and Justice Council has sort of lacked, you know, that ability to look in, and so that could just be a great tool, and we've already got the organism to sort of take action.
But also our Racial Equity Council, I mean, this is the whole point, is how do we actually fight the systemic racism within our laws and our policies, right? And so having them also contribute to it, because if we keep going to, you know, I'm not saying the Law and Justice Council has like one vision, but if we're really trying to go to the root of the issue, then there has to be people who are actually being affected, and I've been kind of plugging in at the one that's available right now. So it's very interesting to see the initial data that's, that's been through, so.
Yeah, and there's, you know, you may want to invite Andrew Peterson to come in. Andrew's a sharp, sharp guy, really knows what he's doing, and he's the one running the study for us. And he and I and his boss did a presentation to the, I can't remember, probably to the State Bar Association on this idea, you know, letting folks know that, you know, they were in the early stages of coming up with this approach they called Data for Justice. And when we'd started it, we actually mentioned to Leonard's predecessor that, you know, I could see applications that go, it's not just court-related, you know, they could, this approach can be used across, you know, any sort of organizational boundary. So there are all kinds of ways that it could be adopted. I just think it's important, and I want to make sure that folks know it's out there, and we are actively engaged in it, and we all can say, take some credit for the fact that the original idea came from Thurston County. And then the, the last thing I had on my list here to talk about was, and we keep mentioning this, probation. You know, we've lost our probation officers in the budget cut, we don't have supervised probation. And the reason I am remembering to highlight it again is that Pat O'Connor had reached out to me last week while I was home on COVID and said, hey, I need to talk. So he and I talked, even though I was home on COVID, it was great, I could do all my work. And so Pat has a particular, he was, you know, he's been losing some folks here lately. We've lost three lawyers out of the District Court unit, including the supervisor, she's about to leave here in a month. And so he's, you know, really stressing over how are they going to provide the public defense services they need for District Court, which has by far the highest number of people, you know, in our court system. And he had mentioned specifically the calendar that we call the Failure to Comply Calendar, which has grown significantly in the last period of time, and grown very much so after losing our probation officers, because we don't have the ability to supervise people who are on sentences without those supervised probation officers, so we have to cite them into court and have it be more of a court probation sort of approach. Well, that means there are lawyers there, and it's taking up more and more of their lawyer's times. And so Pat is, he said, can we do something about this? I said, yeah, we'll work on, see if we can make adjustments around the edge on scheduling and, you know, information provision, that sort of thing. I said, but frankly, if we had our supervised probation officers there, a lot of these cases wouldn't be in the court. Probation officers themselves would be working with them, and they wouldn't be failing to get their treatment, to follow through on some of their other obligations that the judge has given them as part of a sentence. So, you know...
You've got to spend money to save money, is what you're...
You've got to spend money to save money, and I said, Pat, so next time before the board, how about you make a plug for probation officers? And, you know, I don't want to undercut Pat's needs for lawyers, you know, I'm sure he needs lawyers, so I'm not saying, you know, don't give him what he's, what he needs, but there, this sort of goes back to that number two thing we talked about, about the connections. You know, it's, it's not only if you add folks here, you're going to get more work here, it's if you take folks here, there's going to be, we don't have the ability to do the work, but somebody has to, and so it goes, comes into the court, and then Pat's folks have to get involved at that level, where they don't necessarily involve at the probation officer level, because we're counting on good probation officers to work through that. So just an idea of how this system impacts.
I have a couple of questions for you. How many probation officers did you have to cut?
Two.
Two probation officers?
Two supervised probation.
Two supervised probation?
Yeah.
Just, so one was a, excuse me, probation counselor and one was a probation clerk.
Okay.
Held different caseloads, and we had to transition some workload for the other one, but I just wanted to make sure. It's two different positions, but effectively had to cut all of supervised probation.
My next question, so what's kind of the biggest need that the court is, you know, or the most cases that, you know, are coming to the failure to comply? Is it DV, is it DUIs? Is it something specific where...
Yes, it's those two.
Those two specifically?
Yes. And so what we've had to do is, in response, because we're not putting people on supervised probation, we do have two mental health probation officers who's, because of their funding source, the treatment sales tax, you know, deal with the folks who have mental health issues, and they're very effective in that. So we're trying to be really good about getting the people who have mental health needs to those mental health probation officers, but there's still a lot of criminal defendants who don't qualify for mental health probation, but there's nobody really there working with them on, okay, you know, cajoling them, working with them, assisting them, you know, all those different ways of dealing, how that relationship goes, to meet their obligations. And sometimes, you know, there are all kinds of challenges that people face, so having somebody who will work with them, as in a probation officer, is really helpful, and it would significantly pull back the number of cases we're having on our failure to comply calendars, where attorneys have to be present. So there would be an advantage that way. I just want to make sure you just understand that this doesn't happen, you know, without impacts on other parts of the government, and it does.
I guess my request would be maybe for District Court to work with our budget. I mean, with these positions, because the impact is there, right? We're seeing it all across our community, and we're seeing the impact, of course, in public defense, and we're seeing it through the courts, and we're seeing the recidivism rates go up, right, when people are not under those probation services, and it's more of a voluntary rather than, you know, court mandated. And so I guess I might, my request, and this is just coming from my commissioner, is like, is there a possibility to maybe see if this, would these positions qualify for any other fund, especially as we're coming through the budget session, you know, I know general fund is not really an option, but if there is anything else where it could be plugged in, I would like to know that.
Sure. I mean, I want to clarify one thing, is that the court is mandating folks do things. That hasn't changed. What's changed is the compliance rate with the things that we're mandating, and it's because there's just not a lot of follow-up until we get them into court, but our calendars are full, so it takes a while to get somebody into court, whereas a probation officer could get somebody in right away. If they don't have a monthly compliance report, they could say, hey, come talk to me about it, whereas it might take two months for us to get them on a court calendar, because we have so many of these different cases, that's number one. And number two is, on supervised probation, we actually, we charge probation fees. Now, you know, there are folks who can't afford it, so we try to minimize those for some, but there are folks who can. Those probation fees are one of the few fees that we charge that stay with the county. The county, the state does not get a share of those fees. So, you know, it's not, I don't know that that fully funds probation officers, but there is a way of, you know, the court imposing probation, supervised probation fees, which, when we have supervised probation, they are probably twice the level of our monitored probation fees. So the county does get money that comes directly to the county into the general fund of that.
Before we go to Commissioner Evers' topic, so when you said DV and DUI, those are basically, those are the primary cases that would be put on supervised probation, right?
Correct.
So that's, that's kind of very predictable and what you'd expect.
It is, yeah. And those are the ones that have the most affirmative conditions. So, you know, it used to be, for example, on theft cases, we'd require somebody to go take a theft class, you know, all the reasons why you shouldn't steal. Well, we don't do that anymore, you know, and whether that was efficacious or not, I would guess it's probably not overly, statistics wouldn't show that that's overly effective, but we were doing it, now we don't do it at all, because we don't have anybody to verify that it's been done. And so there are examples like that where we're just not imposing certain parts of a sentence, because there's nobody there to check on it. And one of the last things you want to do as a judge is to say, do this, and know that we have no way of verifying it, because then if our words become totally meaningless, that word gets out, and people will just ignore everything we say. So we want to have some ability to follow up on what we're doing, so we're cutting some of our, don't do this stuff, and trying to figure out how to focus on those that are important. And as we went through this probation cut, you know, we started reducing the number of, when we, caseloads were so great that we had to bring the probation officers that we did have, where we'd say, okay, you can only work with people on their third DUI. If it's their third or more DUI, then we could give them, but the ones with one and two, we didn't even have the word for them. So, and then DVs, if it's a first DV, no, we're not going to put them on supervised probation, it would only have to be the second. So that, the demand is there, there is absolutely no doubt about it. It's just, you know, how we want to structure that compliance approach.
Because it's a big spider web, the demand's increasing, too, as we speak also, with the increases in DUIs. Because it's a big spider web, the demand's increasing too as we speak also with the increases in DUIs and DVs that we've been seeing. It's, when you start looking at the numbers side of things, it's got just this huge spike that's coming up because you have the loss of the supervised probation where we can mitigate some of those issues, reduce the recidivism like Commissioner was talking about, as well as increase the compliance rates. But when that ends up going away and you already have an increase and thirty, forty percent, like I said, in the failure to comply dockets, and then you add in the increase in the number of violations that are coming through, those filings from law enforcement increasing another thirty percent, we're just going to keep seeing that spike without those needs being addressed.
Do the majority of your clientele, I guess, have they got something to do with alcohol, drugs, if even anger management?
Hard to say majority, but a significant number, absolutely. You know, mental health, if we add in mental health, I would say then that's a majority. If it's alcohol, drugs, mental health, yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's, yeah, the anger, mental health, that's it. I just wonder why the treatment sales tax couldn't be a resource in some regard. I know we do a lot of prevention.
So mental health probation is treatment sales tax that specifically?
What about the alcohol and substance abuse in general? I don't know, I don't know what the rules are, but I think it's worth looking at.
I'm pretty sure the statute that authorized treatment sales tax said it was to focus on mental health issues. And so if somebody, you know, addiction is not viewed as the mental health issue, it's viewed as an addiction issue. And so.
Who makes that determination? I mean, I'd take your word for it more than I would probably a social worker that comes up with that. I mean, you deal with it every day.
Yep, we do and, you know.
So if you wrote me a letter that said it was, it would be.
I'll write you a letter.
Let's be innovative about this and see if we can't come up with a solution.
Yeah, these should all be funded by treatment sales tax.
Well, not all.
And then the second paragraph of the letter would say, and we need a new courthouse.
Well, yeah, the money for the new courthouse might not be there. We might reprioritize what we're doing with treatment sales taxes. I mean, there's never enough of whatever we do, you know? But maybe a little bit here and a little bit there. How is the electronic monitoring, how's that coming?
Well, I think we're in the process of seeking a renewal of the funding for the SCRAM devices and EHM. It's, it's great, it's allowing us to not put people in jail.
I mean, doesn't that solve a lot of problems for all of us?
Oh, it definitely helps, yeah, for sure. But I mean, we're maxed out, we're, have we already outspent the, I don't want to say that, don't say that publicly. Are we very close to spending our max on EHM and SCRAM?
No, not spending the max. We've hit that plateau, we're at where we're going to be. It's very consistent in the expenditure as well as the people that we serve through the program. So when we ended up starting it, it was kind of a pilot program that the board ended up approving. And then we had the growth period for the first six months of it and then we were able to look at the data, look at the expenditures to supporting the program. And now we've gotten those numbers fine tuned and those will be coming to the board very, very shortly, probably in the next week or two, I'm assuming.
So that has been a big tool that we use and it allows us, you know, when I'm sitting there looking at a case and I'm seeing people who are struggling and I know there's a public safety risk there and we don't have any good way of assisting them with compliance, otherwise jail might have been an option, but now we can put them on a SCRAM device or electronical monitoring and have some, you know, greater degree of comfort that we're a little bit protected anyway. That's been an effective use of technology.
How does that, like, say on your DUIs? I mean, I know there's a lot of conditions that often go in there, but keeping folks like, you know, monitored for not consuming alcohol has got to be a paramount one. So I guess what I'm saying is, what I'm getting at is if you took every DUI case and funded it with a SCRAM, you know, or every second one or whatever that cutoff is, you know, how does that work as a surrogate for all the other things supervised probation was bringing to the table? Am I making any sense?
Yep. It's, it's a really effective tool because if you can react quickly to renewed use, which is a really bad signal for somebody who's facing a criminal charge for use, we can be more successful in dealing with that. If we don't find out about it for a long time because they're only doing one UA a month of treatment and it's like the NFL players, they know when the UA is coming. So everybody in the NFL tests clean all the time. And that's what a lot of treatment agencies are like because it's not random testing. It's just you have an appointment on Tuesday, so here comes your UA test. And so, you know, smart people know how to avoid positive results on the UA test. A SCRAM device measures twenty-four seven, you know, in the use of alcohol. Doesn't measure drugs, but it measures alcohol. And for a lot of our folks, alcohol is a big problem. So it allows us quick response time and typically what happens is we'll use it in the pre-trial time period between arraignment and sentencing when they are not in active treatment. And then once they're in active treatment and going, we then encourage our treatment agencies to do more than one UA a month and have, you know, encourage them to do random UAs. Truthfully, that, you know, UAs are expensive and they're being paid for by the client, the defendant, who's having to pay for them. So for folks who don't have much money, that becomes problematic. And then a SCRAM device may be the only option. So it's used heavily pre-trial when we don't have somebody in treatment. Once they're in treatment pursuant to a court order, sometimes, I mean, typically the way I'll use it is I'll say, okay, it's sentencing, you have this history, I'll keep you on the SCRAM device until you show me you were actively engaged in treatment, not just trying to set it up, but you're actively engaged. And they're giving you random UAs. And when I have a report from the treatment agency that they're doing that, then we'll take them off SCRAM and let them work with the agency. So it's a really good transition point. And frankly, you know, I ask people all the time when they've been on the SCRAM device and for whatever reason we're allowing them to take it off and if it's been on for any period of time, you know, say a month or more, say, so talk to me about it, you know, what are they thinking? The comment I hear a lot is, you know, honestly, I hated that I had to wear it, but boy, it really helped remind me not to drink. And I've actually been, you know, I haven't had a drink and I don't right now feel like I want to have one. And, you know, some people probably BS me, but I think there's a lot of sincerity in that. And it, just wearing the device itself can be effective to just have this constant reminder that there's something you're not supposed to do that has been constantly getting you into trouble. And so we see benefits there too.
How does the, sorry, I was going to ask about how does the options program with corrections, right? I know that was impacting and I'm wondering how that's going now, where the conversation is now.
Love to see availability of the chemical dependency program and domestic violence offender program and custody, but I don't think they're up and running. I haven't referred anybody to them because we haven't been told that they have anything up and going. So if somebody's in jail, you know, the last thing we'd want to do is say, okay, you have four DUIs, you're going to get a year in jail, lock them up, pardon me. And then think to ourselves, well, okay, when they come out, they haven't had any treatment. You know, when we had the CDP program, we could say, here's a year in jail, but go do the CDP. And that's a really effective chemical dependency program. In jail, it's a really effective treatment program, probably more effective than any out of custody treatment program for other motivational reasons. And people are much more likely to reduce recidivism if they participate in treatment while in jail. So that's why, from our standpoint, it's so important.
Is that what you're doing now? When you can?
We can't because I don't think the jail has the staff to, full CDP.
It's for the movie shop, they don't have the phase release doctors.
Right, so, you know, it used to be, you'd be in custody for, say, sixty days and you'd transition to work release for a period of time and then transition to electronical monitoring and then be done well before your year. That would be motivation for the defendant to comply and it would allow us to phase them out of, you know, protective custody so that, you know, we had some sense that they were going to do okay. But without those phasing, it's, doesn't work as well.
Ten years ago, I was hearing that, like, the technology that's used for a SCRAM bracelet could be embedded in the steering wheel. And so it'd basically be like, and it was being piloted in Europe is what I heard. And so it'd be like a, an ignition interlock system embedded in your car so that you would just know, you know? Like, if you weren't sure, you went to a bar, had two beers, you come out, it would basically not let the car start if it would detect alcohol and then you'd see like, okay, well, I can't, I need to get a taxi or something. And then police wouldn't have, be way more efficient for law enforcement because they wouldn't have to just pull people, you wouldn't have units of people just pulling people over fishing for DUIs. You'd actually know if the person's, you know, if the person's driving and they're holding the steering wheel, they're not under the influence because the technology allows them to ascertain that by the fact of the car being moving and running. Somebody could put their hands on the wheel to start it, but somebody can't, somebody can't drive the car. So it sounded like this would be a really brilliant sort of a revolution technology. And I haven't heard a peep about it in like, since I heard about that like ten years ago. Have you heard of anything like that?
I haven't, although it doesn't surprise me that there was conversation about that. But I would think.
Cars are going to drive themselves before that.
Just put your gloves on and, you know, go in there. And that would be somewhat problematic for that. And, you know, it's a lot like what happened with the ignition interlock where, okay, you can't, the car doesn't start if you don't blow a clean breath. And, you know, with that, apparently, I mean, you have to blow a certain, even while you're driving in order to keep the car going. Well, it became problematic as to who's actually blowing into it. So now the ignition interlocks have cameras associated with it in order to prove that it's the person who's been assigned the ignition interlock who's actually blowing into it. So, yeah, I mean, these devices are great, but they're not foolproof and, you know, people.
Well, I wasn't even thinking about for court, I was just thinking about for the average person, the average person that would like to abide by the law, but you don't, you know, DUIs, it's always tricky. You don't always know, you know? I mean, there's rules of thumb or whatever and, but most, I think vast majority of citizens, if they knew, would be compliant.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we convince Ford and Chevy and everybody else to put these little sensors in their steering wheel in all of our cars.
Yeah, that's.
And, you know, if we're all at, you know, if we're ever at point oh eight, it just won't start. And you're right, I mean, it would, it would reduce.
Did you have a question earlier?
Yeah, I did, actually, I had a question about probation and it was answered. So thank you for talking about that. I also had a couple of questions. You said the UA, I'm wondering, how much does a UA cost for community members who have to pay for that?
It can vary greatly.
Depending on what we're testing for.
It can be anywhere from fifteen dollars up to three hundred dollars. That confirmations need to be done based off of what panel tested is, what you're testing for.
Okay, and how often, when someone's in a program that requires them to take a UA, how often do they have to do that?
You know, what we try to aim for with somebody with a significant issue is one UA a week, so four a month. But, you know, that, for some, that's doable, for some, for a lot, it's not, that's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
If they're paying for it. You know, we do do funded UAs through the friendship diversion program. So that's part of the money that the county appropriates. We use that. When, you know, if it's a straight drug problem and the SCRAM device isn't going to measure, you know, marijuana use or meth use or something, we'll send those people to go do UAs. And so, you know, we use some of the funding to pay for those UAs for folks.
Okay.
Most of them are SCRAM though, and those ones, those can be about fifteen dollars per day.
Okay.
Lost on those, including the hundred and fifty dollar hookup fee and anything else if something breaks.
And that all falls on the, the person who's going through it?
Unless they're approved for this program.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you. I also was kind of wondering on the courthouse topic, I know we've heard from stakeholders a number of times about the conversations regarding the courthouse having an impact on staff morale because people are, you know, there's just a lot of stress and overwhelm and uncertainty amongst the staff. And I'm just wondering how, if there's like a pulse on how staff are feeling at this time with the current conversations? If you could give us any insight on, into that, like, are people excited? Are people kind of nervous? Like, how does that feel?
I think right now they're just waiting. They're waiting to see what happens. There's conversation with, essential for the sheriffs to move out and what that would mean. I think there's a lot of conversations and our staff understand that morale. We have a great group of people, morale's generally high with our teams and they are absolutely fabulous. So I think right now they're just waiting for those conversations to develop a little bit, to see where they are. Yes, some of our staff would love to get out of the closet, in the closet that I call it, that they're kind of crammed into right now. And I think there's some of that opportunity as we have further conversations when any decisions are made on the sheriff's office or what that building three looks like. So right now I think they're all being very patient with us and waiting for those conversations to happen.
Okay, thank you.
And my assessment is that they're excited that the conversation hasn't died, number one. And number two, we're somewhat unusual. Frankie and I, we're just at a judicial conference where this was coming up and we spoke, talked about it. Our staff is heavily Gen Z, millennial. You know, we don't have a lot of, we have some like me dinosaurs, but not many. And we heard complaints from our colleagues around the country who had such a hard time dealing with their younger staff. Our morale is really high and I, I think we see, we have a bunch of young folks who are seeing a potential career in the justice field. And so they're seeing the possibility of a new facility, you know, it may be in their work life, you know? And they're thinking, okay, you know, we can be patient because we might end up with this place. So, you know, I think there's some level of excitement about that. So we have a bunch of career oriented young folks who I think see themselves potentially working in a courthouse. So for them, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you. That's all I had.
Could I ask you about, so I was kind of transitioning out of practice of law when, you know, marijuana laws changed and there was a lot of talk when the laws were changing about how it affected DUIs and stuff. And I'm just wondering, five or six years down the road, what have you guys seen? You're on the front lines of that. Have you seen more marijuana related DUIs or a concerning connection between? I mean, I didn't see it in the early years of the first couple of years and I just kept wondering, is that just because they don't have the technology to test for it as easily as alcohol? And is that coming? I know Washington State University was supposed to be working on some kind of breathalyzer that was going to give, you know, the requisite tool for law enforcement to be able to do these things without having to arrest people and take them in for blood tests, which was more cumbersome and a deterrent, you know, if there wasn't strong evidence of impairment. I'm just curious what you've seen.
And it's an excellent question. Without looking, I don't know the statistics, I can tell you anecdotally that, yes, the number of marijuana related DUIs has gone up, but not hugely. Alcohol's still the, by far the largest component of the DUIs. I do know and consistently that Traffic Safety Commission data tells us that alcohol and marijuana's are the most lethal combined ingredients in fatalities. They occur more frequently in fatal accidents than any other, just straight alcohol, straight marijuana or something else. It's the alcohol marijuana combination. So that's a bad combination. And on the other hand, you know, we don't have just the straight possession marijuana cases, which used to be, you know, another version of the driving suspended third cases, just these cases that fill your calendar that don't have a whole lot of impact on the society around them. Those have gone away.
Other questions? Well, we got district court in front of us. Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's great for us to have this opportunity just to sort of fill you in on some of the things we're seeing and not have to be here asking for something. So it's nice to be able to do that. All right, thanks everybody.
Good to see you.
Thanks for the water. Wasn't sure I was going to survive.
All right, we got treasurer's office up next and county treasurer Chuck Gavin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Still sunny. I don't think that's going to last for the week. So things are going well in the Treasurer's Office, you know, working through some things right now, along with all the rest of the finance people in the county. I think one of the, the things that we're, we've got right now that's impacting most everybody, if you notice out front parking lot, we've put a new drop box out there and really excited about that because I was very, very concerned with the security aspects around the old box that was out there that primarily had to do with the size of the opening. That box that we had out here was originally designed as a used prescription drop box. And so the opening to drop things in was pretty big. And within a few months after we were here, we noticed that passersby were dropping random objects in there and, and it just became very, very problematic with the business items that we needed to get in there. And so facilities did it, did a fix on it. It still allowed the opening to be a little bigger than I felt comfortable with. And I was having a conversation with the auditor one day and Mary said, oh, I've got a retired ballot box I'd love to let you have. So thanks to the auditor, got ahold of a box. We made the new box green so that it would differentiate from a ballot box. Hopefully it's not as much mix up on the part of citizens. And the best thing is with the size of the opening, I don't have to worry about people dropping Coke cans or whatever in there. The other thing is to deal with security is as of right now, there are two keys for that box. I have one in my possession and the mailroom has one in their possession. So it allows me to track custody of tax payments a whole lot better than I could before. So, you know, I, I used to be confident when somebody'd say, well, I dropped a payment in the box. I say, well, here's how, how we operate that box. I don't think so. But now I am much, much more confident when I, that I can make that statement. The other, one other thing is that we had one of our, on the investment side of things, we had one of our brokers that we contract with approach us a couple of years ago, Nicole and I, and say, hey, you know, I think your, your portfolio is big enough now, you might be able to benefit from having a, a third party advisor that's looking at your investment portfolio and making suggestions to you. And our, our portfolio right now, it floats between one point two and one point three billion roughly. And this role would be, is, is different from a broker. This is an independent third party that's not going to make any money based on whether we buy or sell or anything. We do pay them money. But the earning, the extra earnings we're going to get are going to offset what we have to pay them, which is the only way it makes sense. They're just looking at our mix of securities and securities we have, analyzing what else is out there in the market right now and then making suggestions for things we might want to get rid of, additional things we might want to bring on. We are only in a month into the operation of that contract, but they're already pretty active with us and pretty confident it is going to be a good partnership. What else is going on? Well, we got the TC Connect thing. All of the finance staff in my office are working very, very hard to work through issues that we've had with that. I knew, and we all knew it was going to be bumpy just because software conversions, the bigger the system, the bumpier they can be. But I think this was a little bit bumpier than what we even anticipated. But we're working through issues. We finally were able to completely report July financials for our customers last week and we're going to do a much quicker turnaround in August. And hopefully by the end of September, we're on track to being current with that. And it's just unanticipated issues with TC Connect, but we're, we're getting there. And I think, you know, one thing I, I, I was sitting here wondering how I was going to present that. And I really want to give a shout out to staff in my office, Mary's office, commissioners, for how, and IT, for how resilient they've been and how they've kept their spirits up and we can do this, we can deliver. And, and I don't think that's enough to say. Because what I want to say is, I know staff in my office are doing this, that they grumble into their breath. I try to support them as best I can. And generally, they're, they're doing this with a smile and they're very proud of the work that they do. And, you know, most, especially finance staff, really pride themselves on the work that they normally deliver. And they've been very, very frustrated because they can't deliver the quality of service that they normally have. But I want to add to this, I know that there's a couple of staff in my office right now that are going through a couple of very painful things. And they're still delivering for you and the taxpayers, delivering with a smile, delivering quality. And I think that's important to remember because I know I'm not the only office that has issues like that. So I just want to give a shout out to the employees of this county because we've got the best. Let's see, another significant issue we've got is armored car service. We've been, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say thank you so much, Jeff, for bringing that up because I think it is very important that we recognize our amazing employees who are right now just really bending over backwards. I, the TC, I got into the TC Connect group and that team's is going off constantly. And sometimes it's till very late hours at night, like people are just working really around the clock. And I think that we should do, I'm not sure, maybe towards the end of the year before our last board meeting, bring all the employees who've been working on TC Connect and really recognize them. County manager?
Yeah, there's some plans to do a recognition on TC Connect, so we'll round that up.
Good. I, I think that would be good. You know, I, I say every day to anybody that'll listen that, you know, they'll, they'll say, hey, you're doing a good job as treasurer, which isn't to pat my own back, but I say, you know what? It's my staff. My staff are what enable me to stand in public and get a compliment like that. So I, absolutely, it's all them. Another significant issue we've got is with our armored car service. So we've been using Loomis for quite a few years and they have provided us with excellent, excellent service. But they, in May, renegotiated their contract with the state, which is how we're contracting with the service. And their fees have more than doubled from what we were paying before. So we're shopping to see if somebody like a Garda, there's another company called Axiom, might be able to provide quality service at a more reasonable fee. It's still going to be more than what we were paying before. But one of the issues that we're dealing with with Loomis is not only did they increase their basic trip charge, but they started charging us insurance for any deposits that we're sending that are over twenty-five thousand dollars, which is very frequent, especially around tax time for us. And it's frustrating for me because I don't understand, you know, if they make ten stops and each deposit is twenty thousand dollars and they got two hundred thousand dollars in the truck, that's two hundred thousand dollars versus making one stop and they pick up two hundred thousand dollars and they're going to ding that customer for this extra insurance, still two hundred thousand dollars, it's still the same truck, it's still being driven the same distance. So don't get me started.
Jeff, you're not the only one in the county that uses Loomis.
Yes.
I'm assuming this would impact all of their customers in the various county offices and departments?
It has. I don't know who the clerk is using currently because they're on a separate contract that they nego, they negotiate. But it's us, Public Works at the landfill or the work, Sheriff, Public or District Court. Yeah, there's a lot of county departments that collect money that this is affecting and so.
So like, do you have like the lead to find a shared contract for the whole county other than the clerk or?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have been in conversation with my fellow county treasurers. And so I will be able to utilize one of their contracts when we select a vendor. And I don't think I had anything else except you guys all know that if you need a ready smile, you can walk into my office and get one for one of my staff.
Jeff, since you're serving the county on that Capitol Lake Deschutes Estuary Funding Governance Work Group and that process is about to come to the board, is there anything you'd like to share about that process wrapping up and how you're feeling about it?
It's been an honor, you know? I kind of, it was de facto put on that committee by virtue of taking office as county treasurer. And it was originally that the executive group, which had commission representation and the finance group, which was finance people from the various partners, were two separate groups operating up until the, the group was reinvigorated this last year because we got to the point where we signed an MOU amongst all the partners with the idea that we would come back together to form the actual interlocal agreements for operating. And this year, the finance people and the executive people were, were thrown together. And it has been, I think the first meeting I attended was in twenty eighteen. And so it's been six years and it's been really rewarding to work through this process. When we started, we didn't even know what decision was going to be made. The EIS had just begun to be put together and studied. And, you know, the, the questions were, is it going to be a lake to where we do nothing and continue to manage it the way we have it? Is it going to be an estuary? Is there going to be a hybrid? Where part of it's a lake, part of it's an estuary? And when the EIS was completed and the recommendation was to do the estuary, then the work amongst the seven partners, and just to remind you, is the state, Thurston County, City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, Lot, the port and the Squawson Island Tribe came together and put together an interlocal agreement for how we were going to fund it, how we were going to pay for it and, and the general operation of, it's called the DESK, Deschutes Estuary. It's basically the operating group that's going to continue to manage this estuary and the estuary process. The agreement right now calls for it lasting until twenty fifty, at which time another agreement would be, would be negotiated. It's important to note that elements, you're going to get a presentation on this from your county manager, but it's important to note, it's not a static document that if any of the partners feel like something needs to be renegotiated, that conversation can be had. But yesterday, the Squawson Tribe, who had been very, very instrumental and very vocal about getting this project off the ground, hosted us for lunch and I was very honored to be a part of that and realize that now, now, the hard work of obtaining funding for construction work is done or needs to happen. But the agreement among the seven partners is done and I'm very proud of being a part of that.
All right, any questions, other questions for the treasurer?
Just a comment, I really appreciate you. Thanks for coming in. I always like hearing from you and how it's going and I can tell you really care about what you do, so thank you.
Thank you very much, I really do. I have really, I care about the people of this county, resident for a while.
You know, I've had probably, I don't know, five or six occasions to go over and personally interact with your staff on, on private matters mostly, but on some county business about how long somebody'd been paying taxes, how much, whatever it was. And I will say, every time, it's been a very pleasant experience.
Thank you.
And I see that others are, they're not just treating me well because I'm a commissioner, they're treating everybody that I see with that same customer service, so.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing, thank you for noticing. I, I appreciate it. And I appreciate all of you taking the time to listen to our conversations. I know they're not always pleasant. I try to be as pleasant as I can. So thank you for your support that allows me and my staff to do a good job.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're at the end of the agenda and we're adjourned.